Okay, folks, it's 6:00 PM. It is Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025. We're in the council chambers of the city of Platteville, and I am calling the regular meeting of the common council boarder. We'll start with roll call. Dave.
Tom Knoll?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Here.
Tony McFaul?
Here.
Barb Dos?
Here.
Bob Gates?
Here.
Kathy Kopp?
Here.
Ken Killian.
And welcome back, Ken. We've missed you. So it's good to see you back. Okay, next item on our agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate if you want separate discussion. We have the council minutes from April 8th, the regular meeting, and April 15th, the special organizational meeting. We have payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions. I did pass out the council appointments tonight. I won't read all those, but council members have been appointed. And additionally, I am appointing John Niehaus to the zoning board of appeals. Licenses, one- and two-year, or one, two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol as in your packet. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve all items under the consent agenda. A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Lynn and a second by Bob to approve the consent agenda as presented. Dave will vote.
Knoll?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
McFaul?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Kopp?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Okay, there are several people who have passed me green sheets to speak tonight or to comment. It's our practice to have comments about agenda items during the discussion on the agenda, so we will delay the comments from all of these have to do with the same thing. And all of them have to do with the pool. So we'll delay that to our, that item on our agenda. At this point, though, I would like to say a special thank you to our city staff and others, as you have had extra work this week, I'm sure, just like a lot of us have had extra work at our homes, doing all kinds of looking about, documenting, and calling insurance agents and those kinds of things. So thank you to all. I know I've seen some reports back from the city. I haven't seen all, but I assume at some point in time, Clint, you'll probably tell us how that's going. So, and to everybody else, hopefully you're finding what you need to find and, and hearing from the people you need to hear from. So, yeah.
I have a question on that topic. I had someone ask me, was the city helping or finding resources for people who needed it because of the hail? I just was like, you can go on the website, if I wasn't sure, but...
Yeah, I don't think we have anything on our city website dedicated to finding help for people who have hail damage, but there certainly are a lot of, people are out and about, and I would urge people to, if you're going to contract with someone, to beware, and perhaps look at folks that you know or that somebody else references. Yeah.
There are a lot of signs out.
There's a lot of signs out, there's a lot of, so there's a lot of local contractors that are around and about, so...
Contacted one group, they had 90 people contacting them, another one had a whole bunch, so it's all over. How many people here had hail damage?
I would, I would venture to say anybody that's an owner in this room has hail damage on anything if they live, on something if they live in Platteville. If not, then you are one of the lucky ones. So, all right, moving on to the next item on our agenda, then. We have reports in the packet, the Water and Sewer Commission. Tom or Lynn, do you have anything to add? I'm sure Ken probably wasn't there.
Nothing.
No.
And the museum board, Tom?
Nothing.
Okay. Then we'll move into the action items on our agenda. The first is award for comprehensive planning services. Joe?
Yes, thank you. So we did a request for proposals from consultants to gather interest on finding somebody to help us with three different planning projects for the city. First one is strategic planning for the council and staff. This is to guide us through the process to create some documents and to help us primarily with strategies and priorities for budget, CIP, and policy decisions. Second part is a comprehensive plan update. This is a statutory requirement that we have a comprehensive plan that meets certain requirements, so this would update our current plan and bring us into compliance. And then the parks and recreation plan update, this is similar to comprehensive plan update. It really is a requirement if we want to apply for DNR funding, as well as it does act for a guide for budget and other policy decisions. So we were fortunate, we received seven proposals, which was more than I expected. Quite a range in cost, from $42,500 to $122,000. We, by we, I should say the staff did the initial review. It'd be myself and Clint and Bob. We narrowed it down to two finalists, then we brought in Sierra Miller, a plan commission member, for some additional eyes on the proposals. We brought in the two finalists for some additional question and answer, gather some more information. And then from there, we were all in agreement to recommend selecting the proposal from Southwestern Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission to complete the project, and their proposed price would be $42,500. So from a budget standpoint, we do have $35,000 in the CIP budget for 2025 to go towards this project. So we could either come up with some additional funds from this money, or from this year's budget, but we are anticipating the project will extend into 2026 for a little bit, so more than likely would make more sense to provide some additional funds in next year's budget to make up the shortfall. And I did have just kind of a brief summary of the proposals in your packet, as well as some additional information that wasn't there last time. Someone had asked about the correspondence we had with township to make sure that they were aware of the project, so we did include some documents that Clint had corresponded with township, letting them know that we are doing this process, and if they were interested, they should reach out to us, and they have not indicated that they would like to take part in it. Any questions?
You had questions?
I'd just like to clarify, so with our budget was $35,000. If we approve this tonight, we automatically are taking that other $7,500, and it will, it has to be put into, rolled over into next year's budget, correct?
Right, we'll have to come up with the additional funds. Right.
So that was going to be my question, too. I mean, so is your recommendation $35,000 from this year's budget and obligating $7,200 from next, or is your, is your recommendation finding the full 42 this year?
I'm, personally, I'm comfortable either way, because like I said, the project will extend into next year's budget if we want to take additional funds. For instance, part of this funding is coming from the housing funds that we use to buy the former Claire property, since that part of the project is housing-related. So if we wanted to use a little bit more of that, that would be one option, or we could find it from some other source for this year. But to me, it makes sense to take it from next year's project, or next year's budget.
So, I mean, I guess I'd like to have clarity in the, in the motion. I mean, it's like, if it's going to be 35 from this year's budget and 75 from next year's budget, or if the council expectation is that you are obligating the full 42.5 this, and, and need to come up with those amounts. I mean, I, I don't, I guess I, you know, I, I, I don't know what that recommendation should be.
I think to keep things clean, if the recommendation was to take the additional funds out of the Roundtree, all proceeds, so 20,000 of the 35,000 was to, to come from those proceeds, I think that's correct.
Correct, yep.
So instead of 20,000, if we raise that to 27.5, is that, and then the, the balance of 15,000 would come from levy, which is how it was budgeted in the 2025 budget. And that way, we all know now how it's going to be paid for. That would be my recommendation.
And by taking this 27.5 from the Roundtree proceeds, do we know where we stand? Is this the first money we've spent from that?
Since the purchase of the Claire properties, actually, now that I say that, I would need to look, which would just take me a minute or two if you want me to, but it will take a minute or two, not a second or two, so I can look that up.
Okay. Okay, other questions on this process? So, go ahead, Ken.
I have to go back to something, and I heard the city manager has come up with a reply. I received this letter about, dated 4/3/2025, and it's to me, Ken Killian, come and council District Four, and it went to the wrong address, and so this is talking about, I believe, what you were going to answer, as far as forestry, whatever. So this, suppose you were going to answer this document.
I'd have to take a look at it, Ken. I'm not sure what the document...
And also, I find that when we go through this here, you're talking about Parks and Recreation Director, and the heading to me for that person should be the Parks, the heading for that area is Parks and Urban Forestry. That is not included. Not in urban forestry. You're lacking urban forestry, and so that should be in there.
Understood, that you're looking for urban forestry to be included as part of a Parks and City Comprehensive Plan? Is that, is that what you're looking for, Ken?
Yes, that's what I'm asking. Why isn't, why isn't that in there? Parks and Urban Forestry. We changed, we changed the Chapter 10 over to Urban Forestry, and I was, I was put on the Urban Forestry Committee, and then I was taken off the committee, and I felt like that that was improper, as far as some of the people said, well, that I was just playing to do a special project, and that's not the case. So I think it should be Urban Forestry included.
Okay, so the Parks and Recreation Plan, I think we have a committee called Parks, Forestry and Recreation. And so my question is, when the city is going to update and revise, I know that the DNR requires a Parks and Recreation Plan, but the question I believe that's being asked is, will there also be included then forestry planning during this process?
Because initially, it was set up as Urban Forestry.
As part of our comprehensive...
That was taken away by one of the members of that committee. So that was not the proper thing to be doing.
I don't believe in their scope.
That's my comment.
Okay, thank you for the comment, and the current scope that was priced in cost for us, I don't believe we had specification on doing a urban forest management plan on our trees and such. I could see, though, certainly as part of a overhaul comprehensive plan of, through a Parks thing, of that being a priority of the committee to include in a comprehensive Parks and a comprehensive city plan, that would be most appropriate, and eventually would arrive at its own separate type of a plan, and how in-depth and how in-detailed, and the experts that we would bring to the table may potentially need its own funding solution.
Because at the present time, as far as expense toward forestry, the expense has been mainly for digging out stumps and doing also the Tree City USA, I believe, as well. So this is very limited as far as what is being done citywide as far as urban forestry.
Okay, well, that has been noted, and I see that our person with Southwest Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission is here, and so I'm assuming that Alyssa has written that down so that it's not missed. There is no, is there a timeline with this?
Their proposal does have a timeline in there. It's not completely accurate at this point, because we thought we'd be underway with the project by now.
I'm having trouble finding that.
Barb, there was a timeline I found, starting on March 1st. Joe, is that the one you're referring to?
Yes.
And ending with the plan adoption, January to February of 2026. So we'd be starting two months later than that.
Schedule.
I'm just, where that is? I printed it off.
Yeah, it's on page nine.
Page 43. Yeah, it's on page, I found it now. It was at the back of the proposal. So, so what is the expectation, then? If notice to proceed is past March 1st, what is our expectation relative to timeline? Because I know one of the imperative things is the Parks Plan for submission with grant applications. So I guess I need to know kind of where we are with what goes on.
Answer that. In, in working with Cheryl and Angie, our efforts through taking action tonight is going to qualify us for having an extension, an exception to the rule, that we're still going to be eligible for those grants in the DNR, knowing that we're actively pursuing updating our Parks and Recs Plan.
But that doesn't tell me how long they're going to allow us to have this. So my question is, the original plan here said that it would be done in January, February of 2026. We're in April, so we're a month late. Let's just say May. So can we expect completion by March or April of 2026?
We're going to maintain compliance, so we'll tease that out with the DNR and make sure that we're going to stay eligible and arrive at enough time to have a thoroughly vetted plan.
Right, but I'm saying the schedule that has been proposed.
It's going to, we can't impose it on the Regional Planning Commission when we're the ones that have kind of impacted the timeline, so in working through the actual contract, we'll have to extend those. Am I answering your question, or what?
I think so, but I, I'm not sure I'm getting the answer that I, I'm not getting a timeline, I'm getting, well, we really don't know.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have to take this timeline and back it up the, the time we've lost.
Well, I don't want to see this extending past the middle of next year. I mean, frankly, we need to be, and I, I don't know. Okay, other questions on this?
I have the information that you requested, if you still would like me to report on it. So we're talking about the Roundtree Hall proceeds, and the current balance in that account is $524,970, 524970. And the original balance was $943,367. Funds have been expended for the purchase of the property, $410,449, taxes of $1,691.43, and engineering of $6,256.25.
Engineering.
Engineering, yeah. Work done by Delta III related to development of the property.
Okay, and I assume we've now applied for tax exemption?
We have to, we are tax exempt as a...
But for the properties?
Yes, but, but when you purchase a property that's not tax exempt in the mid, middle of the year, you have to, yeah.
No, but I'm saying, I assume that now we've applied for it so that we don't have to pay taxes next year.
We will not pay taxes next year.
Okay, so the question then is, the $42,500 to hire Southwest Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission to complete these three things, strategic planning, comprehensive plan, and the Parks and Recreation Plan, and to do that in a timely manner, and certainly before the middle of next year, at $42,500. And I, I don't know how you want to split up, so you've heard the amount that's available from the, the proceeds from the Roundtree. We can go 27.5 there, or we can delay 7,500 and forward that into next year's budget. So I don't know, your pleasure.
Lena, just to take the 27,500 now from the Roundtree proceeds and the 15...
Then we don't have to remember it.
I would agree with that. Yeah, that's what I wrote down, too.
Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Oops. I'm, make a motion to select a proposal from Southwestern Wisconsin, Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission to complete the three planning projects for the price of $42,500, with 15,000 coming as budgeted, and the remaining 27,500 coming from Roundtree proceeds.
And completion by?
And completion by probably around April of next year. A second.
Okay, we have a motion to select the proposal from Southwest Wisconsin Regional Planning to complete these three projects, strategic planning, comprehensive plan update, and the Parks and Recreation Plan at $42,500, 27.5 coming from the Roundtree proceeds, and 15,000 coming as budgeted from the levy, and with the expectation that completion will be by the end of April in 2026. I don't think we have to leave right now. All right, we have a motion. Dave will vote.
Knoll?
Yes.
Parrott?
Well, I'm listening to that. Yeah, yes.
McFaul?
Oh, like, yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Kopp?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're going to move on to two items on our agenda relative to the pool. One is about pool funding options, and that's the first item on the agenda, on, on the agenda. And the second is about proceeding to stage two of the aquatic engineer agreement with JEO. So there are two different items in, but there's one staff note. So the staff note has been left as one item, so we'll go to funding for the new pool first, and is that going to be you, Nicola, or Clint?
I will start it off, and I'll probably have to tag out on occasion here, but as discussion was had at the last meeting, we know that 76% of our ballots cast in the advisory referendum in April came back in favor of council engaging in $6.9 million borrow for the swimming pool. Director Maur presented some financial informations that was, kind of put it in context of how it's going to impact our overall borrowing. There was a question that came from a council member prior to this meeting, in which Director Maur gave some information back. I'd like to hand it over her, as it was a great question and appreciated coming prior to the meeting. So I think the, the question was on the impacts, and I can...
Oh, you're talking about from the president? Okay, yes. Well, let me, let me pull that up here, and...
So we're talking about just funding for the new pool, the first half of the staff note?
Yeah, so the, the questions were, we, we have a, a practice of only borrowing in, in a new year, the same amount of the levy-supported principal that was retired the previous year. So to give you some context, the amount of the 2024 levy-supported premium, principal that was retired was $1,345,000. In 2025, that amount is $1,328,750. So approximately, let's say, 1.3 million of principal is retired each year. That will obviously increase its pace because of the larger borrow for the fire facility that we did in 2024. But currently, from, from more recent borrowings that have been about the same level, that, that's where we're at. The first impact of the fire facility borrow is in 2025, we're paying just under $500,000 of interest altogether in 2025 for all of our debt, and a portion of that, $213,000, is from last year's borrow, which included the fire facility and also the other CIP projects. The principal repayment on the fire debt and the other part of that debt does not begin until 2027. Okay, so that was kind of a lot of information, but takeaway is, we typically pay off 1.3 million of principal a year. That's going to start tagging upwards, and we have not started paying the principal off on the fire station debt as of yet. The CIP for 2025 this year includes borrowing of 1.55 million. That was what was in the budget. Now, as of yet, we have not started that process, and I do not have current figures to, as to what we will actually borrow. So we budget what we think we're going to need, and then our bids come in, and then there can be some project changes sometimes, and so I'm, I will be embarking on that process in the next few weeks. But 1.55 million was what we budgeted to borrow in 2025. And then in, in the staff note, it talked about in 2026, so we, we have a five-year plan for CIP from 2025 to 2029. The first year of that becomes incorporated into the budget, so, but the other four years are what we anticipate, what has been requested, what, what needs have been indicated to the city manager by the directors, and then we have taken those amounts and determined what seems affordable, and then moved some things to shelved projects list. So in that document, the amount estimated for 2026 CIP projects was two and a half million. That included almost a million for a fire truck, and one and a half million for public works, and then that does not include seven million for the pool. So I hope that has provided you with a little bit of context for the numbers that we're talking about, but please ask me any questions that you might have.
So again, the 2025 CIP will be borrowed yet this year?
Correct.
And we don't know when that is, but...
We will stop that process. It takes about three months to go from start to finish of issuing a note, and we will be starting that process in the next few weeks.
Okay. And then the 2026 debt projection of 2.5 is, is not approved? It's just in the five-year plan?
It's in the five-year plan, but not adopted as part of a budget as of now.
And then the 2026 pool geo-debt estimate of, of seven million is added due to the referendum that was passed, or the advisory referendum in April?
Correct.
Okay. So does everybody, so does everybody understand that?
Do you, Madam President? Do you want me to continue into the next item and then come back and vote, or do you want to pause and vote on...
No, I think we'll vote on, I mean, we asked for them to be one at a time.
Okay.
Right, so this one would authorize, this request then is to authorize the city manager and Nicola to produce a funding solution to include borrowing up to 6.9 million in general obligation notes for the design and construction of a new pool, and updated facilities at the Platteville Family Aquatic, Aquatic Center. This does not, we are not buying bonds. This is for you to come back with a funding solution.
Correct, so moving forward, the council will need to vote to actually authorize the issuance of notes, most likely in an amount to be determined, you know, that would include the pool.
I have a question. Since we have nothing shown up there on the screen, I do have some pages... I do have some pages here. I got a page one and a page 29, so. Would you relate to me page you're working on?
On page 56.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Kathy, you had a question?
Yeah. I think you did a good job explaining that. Thank you.
There is mud, I think.
I just have a couple of thoughts. So the new debt for '25-'26 is over $11 million. I mean, I'm just making a statement. That's what this.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay.
If the two and a, if the two and a half is approved.
Yes, if, yes. I realize that. I'm just looking at the sheer numbers. And I realize that the pool debt will be in '26. Will there not be a need for funds in '25 for the pool? Because I'm questioning, last year, we took money out of the CIP to move it to get the pool started. Then, and I think there's, it was like 230,000, and I'm thinking we maybe spent 30. So we have 200,000 there. Is that, is the intent of that to be used in '25? In which case, the actual pool borrow seems to me like it would be 6.7, not 6.9.
Yeah, I would have to defer that to someone else. So in other words, I know that the referendum came back, or the referendum question was for 6.9. We had a separate council action in the budget, which included the 225. But somebody else would need to decide whether those two net together or whether they are separate and.
I personally think they need to be separate. Because the referendum, people were overwhelmingly said yes, that we could borrow up to 6.7. I'm not.
6.9.
6.9, but I'm not sure that it was noted that there is this other fund. So I'm not sure how that works, but I would, simple math, either when it comes down to the pool, if we utilize that 200,000 now, that it would go against the 6.9. Otherwise, I would like to suggest that we take that 200,000, put it back in CIP. We had a pretty massive stormwater break. We have hail damage. And I'm assuming that the city does not, I mean, they have a deductible for their insurance. When those, when those bills come in, how are we going to pay for that?
It's probably a bigger conversation than the item that we're on, but certainly tied to it.
I'm just.
The two components to probably address that is, well, three components is, we have to do our assessment on all of our hail damage. Director Maur is working on CIP reconciliation and determining kind of where existing fund balances are and what projects we want to prioritize with that. The third piece of it is going to be that the pool project budget number is going to be different than a 6.9 in working with available funds with the CIP, if that gets prioritized to go above that, or working with, we already have a lot of folks that are now looking at doing fundraising campaigns. And if there's other revenues and such that can be attributed to it, again, the pool budget will be a different number.
Okay, so again, this doesn't authorize any sale of bonds. This basically asks the city manager and the administration director to move forward with finding a funding solution for constructing a new pool and updated facilities at the family, Platteville Family Aquatic Center.
That would be our first step, is to come back with a plan to address some of those things as being discussed today.
And that's why I brought it up.
Yep.
It was.
That's good.
Okay, so do we have a motion on that, or do we need more discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to authorize city manager Langrick and director Maur to produce a funding solution to include borrowing up to $6.9 million in geo notes for the design and construction of the new pool and updated facilities at the Platteville Family Aquatic Center.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Dave will vote.
Noel?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFaul? Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Killian? Motion carries.
Now we'll go on to the second portion. This is the agreement to proceed with stage two of the Aquatic Engineer Agreement with JEO LLC. So is this you, Clint?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, as discussed, we've entered into a contract February 11th with JEO as our aquatic engineer. They've completed for us what was stage one, which included building a schematic design in preparation for also for public education and all those bits and pieces. As discussed in that meeting, it was, stage one was what we were authorized to engage in pending an outcome of an advisory referendum and decision by the common council here tonight. Going into stage two, if authorized, would include then such things as topography studies, LiDAR surveys, surveys, going from schematic design into design development and eventually into construction documents for the phase, and everything kind of short of putting out constructions and, I'm sorry, arriving at actual construction and oversight. So looking for your approval then to continue engaging with JEO to now begin the actual design and putting together all the details for it. We do have our head here tonight, Mr. Andrew Pennekamp, who is our lead engineer, lead architect on the project. Madam President.
And I do have several people who have registered here in favor of the pool, this pool item. That would be Sinda Fury, Molly Zulkey, and Debbie Sigworth. And I have one person who's asked to speak. So I guess I would call on Cody at this point in time. Unless you don't want to speak. I don't know, it said speak.
Thank you, council, and for all of the residents of the community participating tonight at this meeting. I appreciate your attendance. I'm here on behalf of the Platteville Pool Committee, and I'm asking for the council to approve the funding for the new Platteville aquatic recreation facility with a line, aligned with the strong support shown in the recent referendum. For some background, we formed the committee about nine months ago to research this project and to see what the original cause of the pool's demise was and what we could do as a community to find a solution that best aligned with the community's needs. During the process, we researched multiple pool options and different sites and overall what the community showed the most interest in. Through that, we created flyers, a website, and we involved the community through a survey. And we shared the information with them, fully transparent, online. And the survey results yielded over 1,400 people. And 92% of those people who took the survey agreed that Platteville needs a pool. Of those who responded, we found that the highest interest was in swimming lessons and features such as the walk-in entry. In that survey, 58% of the respondents supported a tax increase. That equates to over 800 supporters. And then in the recent April election, we saw that with over 3,000 voters, 76% voted yes, which shows more support than the original survey with about nearly three showing up to the polls for every one original supporter on the original survey. In the community, as far as engagement, we held an open house for people to come and learn more information about our findings that we gathered as a committee. We responded to questions from the community online. And we built a detailed frequently asked questions page with all of the information and our findings, with pictures and data that we gathered and that was released by the city as well. We've built a lot of trust from our transparency in the community from this project and from our findings. So I'm asking for you to approve the referendum funding for our community as we have many passionate residents who are ready to carry this project forward. We'd like to invest in a resource that brings pride, safety, and value to the Platteville community.
Good. All right, and so now the question is about moving on to stage two. Questions? Do I hear a motion?
I move to authorize the city manager Langrick and director Maur to.
You did that one already.
Oh, the one above it, excuse me. I move to authorize the city manager to contact the architect engineer for continued design and development and to enter into stage two of the agreement with JEO LLC?
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Tom and a second by Bob to authorize Clint to contract with the architect engineer for continued design and development and to enter into stage two of the agreement. Dave will vote.
Noel?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFaul?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Cop?
Stain.
Killian?
Yes.
Okay, that's the end of the action items on our agenda. We'll move into the information items on the agenda, the first of which is Contract 8-25 for highway painting. Howard?
Thank you. Excuse me. This would be our annual painting of center lines and other pavement markings on our highways. This year, we intend to repaint Broadway from Main to Madison, East Side Road from Enterprise to Business 151. And then Alternate A would be Mineral Street from Business 151 to Valley Road. There is a map with the base bid in red, alternate in green. I have here Broadway was last painted in 2014, East Side Road in 2007, and Mineral Street in 2013. The manufacturer recommends every five years. Our experience is that it lasts about eight years. So we're well past that in all of these. We had two bidders, Century Traffic and Forward Traffic and Marking. Last year, they were known as mega rentals. The low bid is by Century Traffic, and they did the painting contract in 2013. Our budget was 62,000. The bid, including Alternate A, is 55.8. So I'll be recommending that we award to Century Traffic for the base bid and Alternate A for the 55.8.
Okay, questions on highway painting, painting of lines on the highway? This would be Broadway, East Side Road, and Mineral Street. All right, that'll get forwarded to our agenda for action at the next meeting. Next on the agenda is Resolution 25XX to submit a DNR grant application for the Southeast Rail Corridor Trail Land Acquisition. And this is actually an amendment. Joe?
Yeah, so, yeah, the Arboretum is working on a plan to extend the trail from Business Highway 151 to East Side Road following the old railroad right away. So this was presented in the fall. We did submit for a grant. We received the grant. As we got further into the project, it was discovered that we are going to have a shortfall, or they're going to have a shortfall from what we initially planned for the budget, primarily because they were working off estimates of the land area that they would need to be acquired from the records at Grant County. As Delta 3 got into the project further and did the actual surveys, the land area was different. And the estimates, the appraisals, were all based on a cost per square foot or acreage of the property. So when the property size changed, the amount of money changed. So this is just a request to, they'll be doing an amendment to the resolution or applying for an amendment to that original grant agreement to obtain some additional funds. And at this point, I don't know exactly what the dollar amount is. But the agreement is the Platteville Community Arboretum will come up with a match. So that's their budget to come up with. So this will be on for information, or it's on for information now, and it'll be action at the next meeting.
Okay, so questions on, we approved this last spring, I think. And like Joe said, when they did the surveys, all of a sudden, there's more land. More land means there's more cost. And so this is an amendment. And at that point in time, we approved that grant with the understanding that PCA would obtain the match. I assume that they, that that would be the same for this.
Correct, yes.
Okay, questions? Okay, so that one will be on for action next time. Next on our agenda is Resolution something 25XX for a DNR trail grant for trailhead parking.
Yes, thank you. We're looking to submit a request for a DNR grant due on May 1st. This is part of the process. We can say that a resolution is in progress. And so this would be for a 50-50 grant to construct trailhead parking at the east end of Fairfield Drive. And it would also serve the adjoining soccer fields. The, if it's awarded, the city would install access road and initially gravel parking area using DNR funds matched with park impact fees. And so we'll have a little bit better idea of the actual amounts. But we're kind of talking in the neighborhood of 80,000. The idea using the map is that we would come in off of Fairfield Drive and create an area for parking, leaving the other portion for soccer as it currently is.
How many soccer fields are there right now? I mean, I've been down there and watched soccer. They play the soccer games from east to west right now. I don't think there's enough room to play north to south.
I know there's one, maybe two.
I've only been there once to watch a game, and I just remember seeing one big field.
And it goes east to west.
So would this trailhead parking cut into that soccer field?
No, there's the other outlot that, if you look at the map, there's that other outlot.
Okay.
That is to the east, and that's where the, that's where the soccer field is.
That's right, thank you.
I guess I'd like to hear from Parks and Recreation on how this is laid out.
Bring in a more detailed map for the, for next week, or not next week, but the following week.
And are we looking at putting parking behind those houses on Fairfield Drive?
That's the potential, the, you see on slide 58 of 62. Again, that's very high-cran drawn, kind of an overlay of where the estimated spot would be. It'd be shaping up, you had a budget on exactly how much space and fill-in materials and those types of things would look like. But it's anticipated to kind of go in that space behind those lots and. but it's anticipated to kind of go in that space behind those lots and butting up against the high school property.
And so, your estimate right now is how much for this lot? I don't think it's in the resolution.
No, we don't have it in the resolution. And like an estimated budget that we're planning on working with is essentially, what can we potentially get for about $80,000 with half of that coming from a DNR grant, the other half coming from city impact fees, which has a very limited type of a use. And then, we're also working with area partners that might have a potential interest in that to see how much, again, how much of a budget that we could put together for the project.
Okay, because I just want to clarify, the red outline is not how big of a parking lot, right?
No, not necessarily. That's just a lot that we would be looking at. We would have to, yes.
That would be a lot of parking. And I don't see how you'd build something like that. I don't see how you'd build that for $80,000 either.
One thing I'm curious about, Howard, and embarrassed to say that I didn't go over and study this behind the houses, but could the parking be to the east and soccer be to the west where that lot is? Just, I'm thinking as far as, if I owned one of those houses, I'd rather look and see a soccer field than a parking lot behind my house. But I don't know how the layout of the land is, if that's even feasible.
Certainly a thing we can take a look at, it, the president's kind of laid out this way. Some of the impacts, too, that kind of go more to the east is how it impacts with extending Fairfield is the intent is long-term plan, the city owns that right away from that road all the way to the east out to.
Hazel Dell.
Hazel Dell. So, there are different options that are potentially there, but the mindset was to preserve the existing field, which is more to the east along the trail and then putting the parking in back behind those houses.
Okay, within the context of that project then, are you working with the property owners so that they're aware there may be a.
Not done so.
Mm-hmm, I mean, we could ask Tony.
We would be.
I know that there's an issue with parking when there is a soccer game or a practice, but I would, I personally, if I lived there, I'd like to know if you're looking to move in a soccer field or if there's going to be a parking lot behind my house. That's all. Proceed to the property owners.
We will reach out to those folks.
Okay, so does this come back to us in May? Because you said the grant app has to be submitted by May 1st.
Has to be submitted, but I think, again, they'll honor it if we get them the actual resolution approval post-date.
Yes, we can post-date the resolution. They just want us to know that it's in the works prior to May 1st. And it'll be the same for the next one.
I think the next one isn't a surprise. I think probably all of us are very, I think that one was, for lack of a better word, I'm going to call it a surprise. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 25XX for DNR trail grants for Mount View Park Circular Trail Maintenance. And I think we know what that is. So, do you want to explain that one, Howard?
Sure. This would be 80/20 maintenance money from DNR. The grants are capped at $100,000. Awards would be announced in fall of this year for construction in 2026. I've identified seven locations right now and I'm estimating $80,000 to $100,000 for those repairs. So, the idea would be that we would need to match that with the 20%, basically up to $20,000 in our 2026 budget. But this would be, as I said, 80/20 money to do maintenance on that trail that was installed in the mid-'90s.
And have we ever done maintenance on that trail?
Two to three years ago, we did some minor crack filling and seal coating and I believe Parks has done a few minor things, some of the potholes and other things, but not much of anything.
Okay, questions on this one?
Yeah, from the Safety Route Committee. They're very concerned that they want to make sure that the areas being done take care of any of those. Right now, there's some sections that have been narrowed down just because of erosion. Have you reviewed those?
Yes, the one that's listed priority two, the one kind of to the east, the little hook down there, that one was one that had some edge, a lot of edge deterioration and that's one of the ones, like I say, it's priority number two. And my intent here is that when we do this, that we would maintain this and get it to at least 10-foot width.
Okay, so that's the Mount View Park Circular Trail, not on our agenda, but could you give us an update on the current, don't we have a current DNR grant on some trail that comes up here?
Yes, we have a combined DOT and DNR grant for what we call Phase One of the trail extension from the PCA trail. The Phase One would get us from the PCA trail up to Mitchell Hollow Road. We're still in the design and design approval processes, especially for the DOT grant. The DOT grant monies, they have a very strict set of requirements and timelines for doing the design work on all of that. You might, you'd think that it was the Milwaukee Zoo interchange sometimes with the amount of requirements that they have, but, yes.
Just a question on that, because that's the one where the slopes are going to have possibly be changed a little because of the acquisition of the Claire Properties?
Yes.
So, right now, where that gravel trail is, I was under the impression that's where the trail for Phase One is going to be, but because of the acquisition, it might be like farther out to the right?
No, no, no. The issue is that that gravel is roughly eight feet wide and the standard is you need 10 feet. And so, we may have to cut into the bank a little bit in different places to make sure that we get the 10-foot wide trail because on the other side, it's a downhill right into the creek. And so, the idea here is if you push it out a foot or two feet into the bank, you need to be able to slope the bank back properly. You know, before, when it was just an easement, it was a lot more difficult. Now that we, the city, own all of it, you know, we can slope it back as far as we need to in order to make a proper, you know, make the proper slopes.
Thank you. I wasn't sure what the acquisition of that land did, you know, how it affected slopes.
Rather than, you know, a two and a half to one, it might be a three to four to one, you know, in those places.
Okay, well, that ends our information portion of this agenda. So, we do have a closed session scheduled. So, I would take a motion to go to a closed session for Wisconsin State Statute 1985, Paire N1, Paire N E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And this is a possible development assistance in TID 9. That's the new TID that we created last year, the overlaid TID. So, I will take a motion to go to closed session.
I'll move.
Motion by Kathy. Second by Bob. Dave will vote.
Tom.
Or Tom, pardon me.
No?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFaul?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
So, we'll take about a five-minute break to go to closed session. And in the meantime, we'll thank Dave. Dave, we hope we weren't too hard on you tonight.